Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. We're here to conduct a public hearing to consider the following items on February 9th, 2026 at City Hall. There's four items for this public area. I will read these. The first is an ordinance to amend the City of Mount Juliet Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Regarding Residency Requirements. The second is an ordinance to amend the Primary Master Development Plan for the Providence Central Plan Unit Development Ordinance 201312, located on Map 97, Parcel 25 and 75.07 in the City of Mount Juliet. The third is an ordinance to amend the Primary Master Development Plan for the Villages at Pleasant Grove, Plan Unit Development, located on Pleasant Grove Road, Map 76, Parcel 37, 37.1, or 01, and 40 in the City of Mount Juliet. And the fourth is an ordinance to amend the Primary Master Development Plan for the Bender's Cove Plan Unit Development, located at 771 Bender's Ferry Road, Map 49, Parcel 69, and 69.01, 69.03, and 69.09 in the City of Mount Juliet. The public is invited to attend and comment. If you would like to address the Board of Commissioners and make public comments to us on any of these four items, I will open the floor up, and I will invite you to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized for three minutes. No one? All right. With that, we will close the public hearing. We'll reconvene for our regular meeting at 6:30. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. Today is February 9th, and I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum present here, all five members. So I want to thank you for attending. If you're in the audience, if you're following along online, there'll be agendas available online. There's agendas here at the doors. And that's kind of our template for how we will follow the meeting tonight. And our first meeting, our first item on that agenda, besides call the meeting to order, is the setting of the agenda. As we get started, I'm going to propose under set agenda that we split the consent, because 8A is requesting a deferral. So there's no need to read those under consent. There's only two items. And then 10B, the sponsor is, will be pulling that for consideration tonight. 10B, T-N as B as in boy. Any other changes to the agenda? Any objections to splitting the consent? All right. Hearing none, we'll set the agenda with the consent agenda split, and 10B will be pulled for consideration tonight. The next item is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask our city manager if he would be so kind as to lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Everybody bow your head to me, please. Dear Lord, as we meet today, please be with us. God, our thoughts and ideas, decisions, bless abundantly all who are present. Come be with us, inspire us, and lead us in our time together. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, sir. Up next is the approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes for consideration tonight from our January 12th meeting. Is there a motion? There are motion and a second on that. We've got, I'll say, an amended copy here with a couple of items in red. Is there any objection to adopting the minutes with the changes? That's it, right there. I think it's just two corrections on votes on amendments. Commissioner Giles, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'd, and while I would have voted for it, I had actually stepped out to the bathroom, and I didn't get to vote on that. Does that say that?
I don't know if it said you went to the restroom.
No, I didn't. That's not what I meant. Well, I don't, but it says for.
That'd be the final vote.
Okay. All right. I understand. I understand. I asked that before.
Any other changes? All in favor of the minutes as amended? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Minutes do pass. That may be the longest set of minutes I've seen in a while. Next item is citizen comments. We will open the floor. This is your opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners. We can't necessarily answer questions from the floor, but this is an opportunity to make your comments on any item that you would like to bring forward. Just ask that you come forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized.
No, this is Tom Smith at 135 Gwell Road in South Mount Juliet, wanting to get a little bit more of a clarification on what this change is on, what do they call it?
Providence Central.
On Providence Central.
I can tell you that the applicant has requested deferral, indefinite deferral tonight, so.
So, meaning we're going to push this several months, or?
If it's indefinite deferral, it's deferred indefinitely until it's brought back for reconsideration. There's no time limit on that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, James.
I can't promise you that it'll get the support, but that generally does on these type of things.
So, is the, are we looking at an industrial type of situation? Are we looking at multi-use type of situation?
My understanding is this is a small tweak for retail, to allow outdoor sales.
So we're getting a Home Depot?
Well.
Come on, just tell me.
If I owned a Home Depot, I'd put it right there, but I wish.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll close citizen comments, and we will move on to Commissioner comments and report. Commissioner Giles, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to think, I want to think Public Works, and I know Vice Mayor Mullins was out, I mean, Vice City Manager Jeremellins was out, and other departments during this freeze, and it was just, you know, they were keeping us informed, and I really appreciate it. I feel bad for the people who had lost power. We had people from our city. We had city personnel who didn't have heat, and it's just, it's terrible. And that wasn't anything that city staff or anybody done here, but I just felt for them. I'm very sorry about that. And the other people wasn't even here. But I appreciate the city doing the best they could. I was on that thread where, you know, you were going and talking to NES and all this stuff, and I know that was your district down there. But it's just, it's terrible. It's just terrible. So I appreciate all the help and everything that our city did. It makes you really proud. And then, and then second, you know, it's like a black guy, of course, I didn't vote for it because I wasn't here. But this, this whole thing out here at this boat dock, and what happened a weekend before last, I guess it was when it was, I want to commend our PD for such an incredible job of securing that area and taking care of that. And it's a sad thing, but I am so glad that we have a police department that's not scared to do the job. And they did the job. And thank y'all so much. And I also want to say, dealing with the police department, the, for better words, the grand opening, or not grand opening, but the drone took off, I guess, last week. And so we're really excited about what that's going to do to help prevent and solve crimes in the city. So thank y'all. Thanks for everyone that got out again and kept us safe here in the city during that bad weather. And I know the fire department was out too. So anyway, thank you, city, for such a great job. That concludes my minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Giles. We recognize the Vice Mayor for five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll mirror that also, Commissioner. First of all, before I get into that, just thanks for the people that did come out tonight for the, for the public hearing, for the downtown potential projects. It's good to hear the citizens voice their concerns, as well as get a chance to see what could be coming to our city, whether if it's something you want or you don't want, but it's good to voice your opinion out there. Yeah, this, this past week, I've heard it, again, I wasn't here, and I think they heard it, 1994, apparently storms were just as bad or close enough to it. But I was up in Cincinnati back then. I remember how bad it was being a kid back then. So, but this time right here, just between all of the first responders, Public Works, our storm team, our city staff, the pre-planning that our, that our police did, they did an amazing job at pre-planning, getting the citizens' notification out, the work there between Public Works, and then the storm and sewer, and then, of course, our PIO officer. It all came together. It was like a beautiful puzzle, and that just goes back to our leadership here between our city manager. So thank you, sir, for, it's like you're the one conducting all the directions, and you've got a great team behind you. So thank you. Also, when we get down to it, for all the groups that were out there, I will tell you this. It was my district, well, most of my district is NES, unfortunately, that lost a lot of power. We were still getting residents this past week, and that we're still getting power back up two and a half weeks later. And I couldn't imagine dealing with that. But there was one gentleman that went without power for, I think, 11 days. And I stayed with him and those three townhomes that had, I think there was over 40 something people there. Our police department, they went and did a door-to-door, just a wellness check, I guess is what we call it, and just wanted to just thank them for doing that. Because, you know, what's interesting is, and our police chief just left, because I was going to ask him if he could be able to come up just briefly and just tell us this, but I heard there was a couple of residents that actually did not know that they should not be putting their generators in their house while they're running. And that is just, that's a missed opportunity, you know, for residents not to understand that. But I appreciate that. And then, of course, the outages, NES, I've been on all the calls with NES that have basically gone, you know, line by line with all the tabletop issues that they had. So, Mayor, if it's okay, can I have our police chief just my last two minutes, if he can give us a quick little update with my two minutes to share what they've been able to accomplish? Is that okay?
Is there any objection to hearing from the chief? Hearing none, you're recognized.
Talking winter storm, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, you know, with any winter storm, we, before it even hit, we met multiple times with city management, Kenny, Deputy City Manager Michael Mullins, many other staff members to have a game plan, right? To understand what our resources were, what were we doing to pre-plan for it. And then when it hit, of course, it's all about safety on the roads. And then what we realized after that was we had some power outages, where a good amount of our community was without power. I think at one point in time at peak, it was around 2,000 customers, and then it dropped to about 150, but the 150 were the ones who were without power for a long, long time. Now, it was difficult to get information from NES. And, you know, one thing we kept requesting was the actual homes that were without power so we could go door-to-door and check on these residents, which we eventually received. And, you know, it was interesting, while we were going door-to-door, we found people in unsafe conditions. We found two homes in particular where they had gas generators running inside the home, which is extremely dangerous, and we're grateful that we found that. We called our fire department out to come out there and help them through that issue and provide a better solution for them to get warm, rather than doing something hazardous inside their home. But we, our officers, staff went door-to-door to every property that didn't have power, just to check on them to be sure that they had what they needed. Those who we could not get door-to-door, we did make phone calls to them and check on them. And, you know, I heard stories during that process from many of y'all who were out there checking on people as well, which is always wonderful to hear about. But we got through it, thankfully. You know, I think West Division finally got power a couple of days ago. But it was a process where the whole city came together to ensure that we were navigating through the storm, to ensure everyone was taken care of. Yep, absolutely.
Commissioner Heffner, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody coming out and those watching online. Yeah, I'll echo some of the, some of the comments that were made earlier about the ice storm. Public Works, fantastic job. You know, the guys in the salt trucks and the snowplows, just kudos to everybody. I know those are the worst conditions to work in, but you guys stepped up and delivered. Also want to thank all the linemen. They often go, you know, very thankless job, and they often work in the middle of the night in some of the worst conditions. So I appreciate each and every one of them that, for what they do. Mount Juliet Police Department, Fire, EMS, did a fantastic job. And all the friends and the neighbors that stepped up to help other neighbors out. We actually had some of our relatives that were ones that were without power and had them, hosted them over at our house one evening. Thankfully, their power turned on the following day, so that wasn't too bad on them. But just, again, neighbors stepping up and continue to step up. I see neighbors cutting trees and helping other neighbors fix their yards up and whatnot. So just kudos to everybody out there that was involved in getting the city back to somewhat of a normal level. Again, Mount Juliet Police Department, you know, they're excellent. I expect excellence. I really do. But I'll never take them for granted. The event that happened out at Cedar Creek Marina, probably some of the worst conditions, you probably could have ever responded to something of that nature. So kudos to you all, and whatever that robot, I don't know if it was a robot or what happened, but I know we utilized all of our technology that we had available to us. And thankfully, nobody was, from Mount Juliet Police Department standpoint, nobody was injured or hurt, because that was, you know, that was pretty intense, I'm sure, for everybody that was involved. And congrats to, on the same lines, Flock 911, really excited about that. We got that launched. It's going to cut more, importantly, it's going to cut down on response times, and it's going to allow first responders to hear real time what's actually being relayed by a 911 call. And with that, I'll talk a little PSA announcement. I had a pretty, pretty bad emergency scare a couple of weeks ago. Not a lot of people probably are aware of that. Jennifer Shager and I had no idea. So first time I ever got the ride in an ambulance, laying on a gurney, and spent the night in the hospital. Long story short, I thought I had a heart attack, and all indications from my tests in the ER. in the ER pointed to a heart attack. Um, EKG came back, was not good. Uh, my heart enzymes were through the roof. Um, and all I heard that whole night was, we hope your enzymes drop. Otherwise you're, you're, you're bound to have another heart attack. So I was thanking God for the fact that I was actually hearing these words come out because most people don't realize they have a heart problem until they're getting wheeled in to a coroner's office. Um, the good news is, there is good news. Um, after a lot of tests, uh, sonogram, stress test, the cardiologist who I saw the next day said, your, your heart is absolutely perfect. He said, I looked and looked for something to, something to, to not be right with your heart and it wasn't. So here's the PSA announcement. So what contributed to the issue, the event that happened, um, that evening, um, last week was dehydration from not drinking water. Very important. Drink water. Low blood sugar from not eating and over 1,600 milligrams of caffeine in my body, which, you know, I drank coffee all day long and finished it off with an energy drink. I don't think it's important to name the one, but finished it off with an energy drink, energy drink about five o'clock in the afternoon. Um, that's what triggered the heart issue. That's what triggered the dizziness. So my PSA is hydrate folks, eat throughout the day. Um, caffeine in moderation. Um, so it's an, and stay away from energy drinks. Um, the ER doctor said the vast majority of the kids that come into the ER are there because of energy drinks. So not a fan of them. Um, I've swore off of them, but I do want to thank our EMS, our fire, um, that showed up at my house that night. Um, just tremendous job all around. So thank you again. Uh, and then on a lighter side, go USA. The Olympics are going on. So just cheer on the United States, right? Some gold medals going. So anyways, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Malley, you're recognized for five minutes.
Well, I am glad you're feeling better and you got some good news out of it. So I did say a prayer for it. All right. So bear with me and just have a few things. Um, just to shout out to Middle Tennessee and I, I hate that happened with, uh, Nashville Electric, but, um, Middle Tennessee over the years have kept the trees trimmed. So, um, that's good. I think that did help a lot and Public Works for all their hard work. Um, I think that, you know, you do an awesome job with the, with the, uh, salt or whatever you call it. Um, let's see. The last meeting of this month on the 23rd, by 15, we have another public work session and that'll be mid-year budget review. And hopefully the numbers from Christmas will be in. Just hope they're good. Uh, let's see, starting March 1st, there is, I'm scrolling, so bear with me here. Walk Across Wilson, um, begins Sunday, March 1st and will end on March 28th. So if you don't know what that is, um, all you have to do is register and log in your daily activity minutes. It could be walking, it could be pickleball, could be, you know, any kind of activity like that. And school and community-based teams are encouraged to participate for bonus rewards. So, um, you know, you could do any kind of act, fitness exercise that gets you moving. So Walk Across Wilson is an annual event to promote fitness in Wilson County. The goal is to walk or exercise 30 minutes a day, six days a week, um, for four weeks. And that's the equivalent of walking 36 miles across Wilson County and while improving your health. So, um, they're having a kickoff on the 28th, day before on the Saturday, uh, but that's in Lebanon. You can find out more. If you want to follow them on Facebook, it's Walk Across Wilson, very easy to find. All right. Uh, let's see. There's a fundraiser for our animal shelter and that'll be, um, the last Saturday of this month, February 28th. It's called a, a spaghetti fundraiser and it will be held at Mount Juliet Community Center, uh, from 11 to 2:00 and it will benefit the shelter. Let's see. So let's see, um, the Mount Juliet Community Center is in Charlie Daniels Park. So Southern Rhyme Cattle Company will be catering the event. So come hungry and ready for an afternoon filled with good food, good people and a great cause. Um, there are more details coming, so just watch for that. Make sure I don't overlook anything here. I think I got everything. Well, I think that's it. Okay. That's it. Oh, one more. The grapple trucks, um, I know that we have so much tree damage from these storms. Um, so this week zones two and five on the grapple trucks, we had two running, uh, are finishing up zones two and five. And then in numerical order, they move to the next zone. So we have eight zones. If you're not sure which zone you're in, um, you can find, find out. There's a map provided under, on the city website. If you need help, just give me a call. Um, so anyway, it seems to be averaging about a week and a half now per zone with running two trucks. It's hard to say because there's so much debris to pick up. Have to go dump it, come back, that kind of thing. So that was all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll add, um, boy, a lot's happened since our last meeting. Uh, happy birthday, Commissioner. Yep. So, oh, you're older, you're wiser. So that's, that's why we delayed the meeting to get a year wiser here. So worked out well. Mr. Hefner, glad to hear that you're recovering. Um, I should, I too should probably drink a lot more water and a lot less Dr. Pepper, but, uh, that wouldn't be as fun, I don't guess. But I don't know how much caffeine I consume a day, but I'm sure it's too much. So, but boy, we've had a, had an ice storm, ice apocalypse. I'll tell you what, Public Works, Police Department, uh, parks, I don't know who all was in this, involved, the City Beautiful staff, uh, all out there pre-planning the efforts to put into it. And Justin and I were talking about some of the stuff that we were going to, you know, say to send out, you know, the pre-meetings and stuff like, we're talking about really is how experienced y'all have gotten with these over the last couple of years. And I see the stuff out there and somebody's like, Mount Juliet don't own a snow plow and it's not really a plow because it's a pickup truck with a blade on the front. And I'm like, are we really debating on what kind of engines behind the thing? If it'd get snow out of the way and ice out of the way, let's just go, let's get the job done. And the next question is how much taxpayer money do you want us to set aside on, on specialized equipment that we can use maybe once or twice a year? So they do a great job of balancing that and serving the city as well. Um, fire departments got, uh, operations running out of the new station. Excited to see that. Uh, we'll have the actual hose uncoupling, uh, coming up at a later date. But I, I do want to be the first. And I know there's been a lot said about the outages and, you know, how one, one utility responds versus the other utility runs and all the planning behind that. And that's, that's an important discussion to have, but I don't want to ever lose sight of the men and women that have been on the front lines working, I don't know, 16, 18, 20 hour days in freezing cold weather to, um, work continuously around the clock to get us back online, online and get power restored. Um, I'm one of those families that we, we had a minimal outage over, it spread over multiple days, less than 24 hours. So I'm very thankful for the, the little time that we had down compared to some because there's so many that are, that are still, and I know there's areas not far from here where there's still power out. And I just encourage everybody to keep those people in their prayers. And if there's any way you can add, check on your neighbors still on these things. Um, I did sign a, a state of an emergency proclamation for the city, uh, back on January 30th, which will allow us to hopefully take advantage of some outside funding on help with the cleanup on this. So that's in the process and it's a, it's a lot. I mean, I feel like, I feel like my yard alone could fill a grapple truck. And, and if you don't believe it, ask my back on cleaning some of that up. But was able to help a neighbor and I still got some more work to do. Had a little mishap with a chainsaw. Um, that's been Saturday night in the ER. Oh, well, not related to the chainsaw, but still it's been a lot going on on here. So I just want to again, say thank you to all the staff, everybody who's worked so hard, the linemen, the men and women who have done so much to, to make this as uneventful for many of us as possible and going well above and beyond for those that were wound up in very unfortunate situations with the way this has played out for some with the lack of power and with the brutal cold temperatures that we don't normally see. So conclude my remarks and I'll recognize our city manager for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thanks, uh, Commissioners and folks that are here tonight, those watching from home. I echo the sentiments of the elected body. Uh, the team is phenomenal. Uh, unfortunately we've had a lot of experience in recent years, especially with snow. We had a lot of snow last year and they've become masters at it, especially with brim and all the different things that they've got to mix up. And, um, I want to thank the commission for getting us the two extra plow trucks. I guess that's what we refer to them as. That played a big difference this year, uh, big time. But then getting out ahead of it, uh, speaks volumes. It goes back to the grapple trucks. You think about, uh, this commission stepped up and we didn't have grapple trucks until the 2020 tornado. Uh, they'll be out in force. Uh, I think they're, they've worked on a grant. We'll be getting a grant for some reimbursement. So it'll probably be a private vendor out here real soon. But I want to thank, uh, Public Works team, the entire team, City Beautiful. I don't think Mr. Marty's here tonight. Of course, police, fire and EMS, because you're right, Mayor, they're the ones out there having to work in it, uh, when it's treacherous and, you know, and everybody else is in a safe location. We continue to pray for those that lost power, those that had damage. I had some damage myself. I think a lot of other people do some. Not that, not in that alone. But I want to thank this commission because if not for the tools you've, you were, some of you were calling off some of the things that we've gotten. Uh, you think some of the technologies the police department needed at, at the dock, at the marina, or you think about the drone, or you think about the adaptive signals, you think about all the different things that we've done with LED lighting and the interchanges, lighting along Lebanon Road with the street lights, a lighting along Mount Chip Road, the upgrade to LED, all the little things I was sitting here and looking at, um, uh, you know, the greenways, the sidewalks, things we didn't have in this city 36 years ago. We have all those things now. It's one of the safest, most advanced cities in the state of Tennessee, if not beyond. So I think that's something to be very proud of and it just continues to, to get better. For example, uh, if you've got an issue out there, you see a pothole, you can, uh, go to C Click Fix and report that and Public Works will get right on that. And we know there's going to be a lot of that. It's supposed to be up to nearly 70 tomorrow. So there's a lot of thawing going on. So please let us know about those potholes or anything else that you've got. Public Works staying proactive throughout the year and doing a lot of cutting back in our right of ways makes a big difference because a little seedling or sapling may be this big today, but then just you'll blink and it'll be big enough and be into the power line. So I just want to thank the commission for buying the things and our citizens for supporting the things that we need, uh, to be a very advanced, uh, city. Uh, that wouldn't be possible also without our businesses. So we encourage folks to please, 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 as Commissioner Malley said, for us, uh, the biggest portion of our budget comes from sales tax. So please shop at your local businesses, your mom and pops and all of our new businesses. For example, there's a Rooms to Go that just opened. There's a Havities Furniture be open soon. We're working on a new car dealership and all the other businesses we've got here. If you need something, you can get it here. And another shout out goes to Lowe's because I was communicating during this, uh, winter storm with the manager at Lowe's, uh, and he had made a special order for Mount Juliet for generators ahead of time and then during the event when they ran out. So I think that helped a lot of folks to get those generators. Appreciate the chief, um, making mention of how to properly use them and to use them safely. So I just want to thank this commission and the citizens again, uh, for all that you do to give us the tools for somebody that's worked here for 36 years. I can tell you it wasn't always that way. And, uh, it's very much appreciated. And it wouldn't because somebody didn't want to, we just didn't have the means to do it. So all that comes because of a collective thing that we do with our citizens and I'm very thankful for that. And God bless you all. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next item of, next item on the agenda is number 8A, an ordinance to amend the preliminary master development plan for the Providence Central Plan Unit Development Ordinance 201312 located at MAP 97 parcel 2575.07 in the city of Mount I have a motion and second. There's a request from the applicant for an indefinite deferral. Um, I'll move that as a, a motion. And a motion and second on indefinite deferral. Any questions, comments, discussions? All in favor of indefinite deferral, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That item is deferred indefinitely. The next item is 8B, an ordinance to amend the preliminary master development plan for the villages at Pleasant Grove Plan Unit Development located on Pleasant Grove Roadmap 76 parcel 37, 37.01 and 40 in the city of Mount Juliet. A motion, motion and second, the item's on the floor. Ms. Malley, you're recognized.
All right. If we could have references, presentation come up. I, I just have a quick question. Is the vintage vines, um, which is pertaining to this amendment, right?
Yes, ma'am.
The vintage vines, is that Papa Joe's house? Is that the same thing or is that separate?
So they are all part of when we, uh, came back through and expanded the PUD, um, in 2023, I believe. Um, the, we brought in, there was three portions of that addition and it's Papa Joe's house, uh, the vintage vines, multifamily and the, uh, there's a commercial parcel as part of that also. And so all, all of that is, so vintage vines is just the multifamily component. And so the, the change is tied to the multifamily, not to Papa Joe's house.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, I was getting those confused.
Probably fine. Is that the only question?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? 9A, an ordinance to amend the city of Mount Juliet Code of Ordnance is Chapter 2 regarding residency requirements.
Motion.
Motion second, items on the table. Any questions or comments? All in favor of 9A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. That does pass four to one. And, and 9B, an ordinance to amend the preliminary master development plan for Bender's Co Plan Unit Development located at 771 Bender's Ferry Roadmap 49 parcel 69, 69.02, 69.03, 69.09 in the city of Mount Juliet. So motion, is there a second? Okay. Hearing no second, uh, 9B. Will not be heard. The next item is 10A, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget ordinance 2025, 2035 to accept insurance proceeds and appropriate funds for a new police K-9. Motion second, questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That does pass on first reading. The next item is 10C, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget ordinance 2025, 35 to appropriate funds for streetlights.
Motion second.
Motion second, items on the table. Commissioner, uh, Hefner, it's under your sponsorship. Would you like the floor?
Sure. Yeah. So, um, I don't know if we got anybody from Public Works here that can discuss it, but it's, these are lights, um, coming through the Clearview Estates, um, neighborhood, uh, that's often used as a cut through. Um, so we, I was out earlier last, late last year with Public Works identifying Middle Tennessee Electric to identify some areas, some dark spots, um, that are in that neighborhood. So that's what this is. Let's put the streetlights in.
Commissioner Malley?
All right. Um, the city doesn't really do streetlights. So I'm confused on why it's costing the city $3,000.
My understanding is it's an amendment for the city to pay for these lights.
Why? I mean, well, okay. Um, I don't doubt these lights are needed. I think lights are needed around the city in many different places. We also have lots of needs signage. Um, so I don't doubt that it's needed. So as far as the budget, um, we have no surplus. We're in reserves. So I really can't see that this is an emergency, even though you think, well, 3,000 bucks, that's not much, but still we're in reserves. Um, I don't know why this couldn't have been brought up last budget and the new budget is only four months away. Um, to me, why not do a citywide, um, you know, survey? Has, has a citywide survey been done about where lights are needed or anything like that? I mean, you don't have to come up. I just threw that out there. Um, so you know, again, the new budget is just four months away. I don't understand why they can't wait. Um, at the end of this month, we don't even know the numbers where we are in mid-year. That's not even coming up until this month. So we don't even know where the numbers are going to fall. Um, again, it, I don't see it as an emergency. Um, so I, I'm not going to support this just spending. We just don't have, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else have comments on this? Commissioner Giles?
I think that we need to assess the city on where areas that are, are needed for this. Originally, I mean, to, earlier today, I was thinking about, about this one and, and I thought, you know, I'm sort of in agreeance with, with Jennifer Malley, but the more I thought about it, because I was, I was thinking one time she brought up something, I wasn't here, she brought up something, you brought one to put down, I think on Woodridge in some places. And there's some, there's some dark places through there too. But the difference, I started thinking this afternoon later, the difference between there and where Commissioner Hefner is bringing is there're sidewalks and there's no sidewalks there. So, you know, that's, when I think about that and these people out walking, I, I just, I have to think about it and I know we're in reserves and, and, but we, we need to budget it and some, for some sob, for some lights in some areas at the budget coming up. I think that we need to do that. I think in the meantime, this is not too much, so, you know.
I know we do, I don't know what our current budget is right now for streetlights. Don't have the budget in front of me, but we do budget for streetlights on, I think, Mount Juliet Road and Lebanon Road is, and there's a few others around Providence area, I believe. That's, again, Golden Bear, that's the other one. Yeah, I'm kind of, I don't have any doubts that these lights are needed, but at the same time, there's, afraid this is kind of like, don't know what the total cost is going to be. And there's, also this is a budget ordinance without a fiscal note attached to it. So I don't know if we can even consider it without the, the note by resolution, but, but I don't know if we should do like a bigger study on this or, because there's probably a lot of areas in need. Commissioner Hefner?
I thought there was one, I thought there was a study going on, a citywide, that I just dreamed that up.
Mr. Martin?
I thought we were looking at the city.
Probably the study we did for the Lebanon Road corridor.
Okay.
And we went down through the middle Tennessee, we went Middle Tennessee Electric, because once you get down close to the county line, it converts to NES and they don't have a similar program, that's probably what it was. It's probably the middle Tennessee pathways that we were doing the study for the Lebanon Road corridor. Now, we could do a comprehensive one for all subdivisions in the city to see.
I mean, there's all, yeah.
Pick out troubled areas.
I think, I think a study would, I, I think it needs, there needs to be driving factors, no pun intended, for, you know, roads that are cut through roads that have, are high traffic. I know that, that road that these lights would, are being put on are, I know it's a cut through road coming off of Old Lebanon Road to get to, to get to the school or get to South Moduli Road. And I appreciate you pointing that out. There are no sidewalks in that neighborhood and there's a lot of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks and have, I'm sure similar problems, but this is my district and I'm going to advocate for neighborhoods in my district. So, but if it's, you know, if it's better suited to, to, to discuss this as a budget item, happy to defer it and just push it down till we have budget discussions in June.
And Mayor, I can definitely do that. I'm hoping I can get with Middle Tennessee Electric, we can pull up a grid. And Commissioner's right, though a resident reached out because this particular road where we had added the speed humps had asked for some safety enhancements. So we met with Middle Tennessee Electric on, on site and where we already had existing transformers is where we felt like the most troubled areas, we, where we went with the five lights.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can get them.
And I mean, sometimes there's confusion about this because there are several neighborhoods in this, in the city that do have streetlights in them, but I would wager that most of those are paid for probably by HOAs and I don't think this neighborhood has an HOA at all, so. Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, and I was thinking about that too. One of the things that, and it's not just in some of the subdivisions, there's some places where some apartments are, and then when you come out on the street, there might be some, some dark areas. And that's needy too, because those people have to walk. And so one of the things that we do at BPAC meetings, we discuss areas in the city where that they've been maybe, well, connectivity, obviously opportunities, but also if there's some damage to the roads or sidewalks where people are walking and bicycling and stuff, and we try to, to, to make a list of that and we talk about that. One of the things I was thinking while we were talking about this, we might be, we're getting at this Walk Across Wilson, we may can put that on our list for people to walk, if they will, I will, through areas to, to try to determine where those, some of those dark areas are. Because definitely walking, you're trying to take care of the pedestrian. So I'd like to do that and I'll introduce that to BPAC and see if we can't get some participation in there doing that and identifying some of that. We can turn that into you, Kenny, to, to put in that.
And then I'm looking with Middle Tennessee Electric.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hefner? Five lights, sorry. Relatively speaking, I mean, I, I thought the price tag was going to be a lot higher than three grand for five streetlights.
In a lot of places.
Yeah. Yeah, especially when we have existing transformers, we don't have to carry that cost, put transformers in, because that can get pretty pricey. But we've got existing, they're, they're literally going to just put the light right on the, right on the pole and tie it right into existing. So for $3,000, you're getting a lot of, getting a lot of bang for your buck. You're lighting up, you're lighting up a, it's a pretty dangerous road with no sidewalks on it, which are pretty dark areas. And again, I'm sure there's, oh, no doubt. Correct.
Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, because I live in Linda City, so, you know, we don't have sidewalks on the sidewalks or even halfway down Linda Parkway. So, but, and this is not a streetlight necessarily, but down some of the side streets, you know, you, I guess they're called security lights where, and I, I don't know, they've been there forever. So I don't know how that works as far as electric company, like if neighbors called and want a pole put in the, because we pay a monthly fee, like I do my neighbor, maybe another house for the security light, you know? So I mean, that might be a possibility if, if the neighbors over there reach out to the electric company.
I know it's a fairly common practice, I believe, in the Willoughby Station neighborhood for either an individual pay, just pays for an outright light or it may be a group of neighbors.
Yeah.
Then sometimes that neighbor moves away and
Yeah.
They call me and want to know whether the light got turned off.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But I, I don't know what the
So just a thought. Well, I, motion to defer to the next budget.
I'll second. Budget passage or budget
Discussions.
Budget discussion.
Because we don't even know where we are. If the money's in the budget, then, you know, maybe, but it can at least be discussed.
Defer to after next budget discussions.
Mm-hmm.
I'll, I'll second that.
Is that the budget discussion coming up in February, this month?
No, that would be in June.
Okay, June defer to June budget discussions.
The regular budget docs work sessions. Like you could submit it, you know, for the next budget and then when we have the work sessions, if the money's there, then it can be discussed and then we can approve it or not approve it.
Well, we, I mean, we could still vote on it and I can always bring it back as a budget item, but I'm happy to defer it.
Any, you've got a motion to defer on the table? Any questions or comments on deferral to after the, to defer to June budget discussions? All in favor of deferring to June budget discussions, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That item is deferred to after the budget discussions. The next item is 10D, a resolution declaring the city of Mount Juliet vehicle as surplus to be traded for a service vehicle. Air motion and a second. Any questions or comments on 10D? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 10D does pass. Next item is an appointment. This is for the Mount Juliet Parks and Greenway Board Appointment. I'll submit the name of Carolyn Christopherson for the Parks, Parks Board seat. And she's, she served in that role in the past, so I put her forward for consideration. Carolyn Christopherson.
Oh, okay.
All in favor of appointing Carolyn to the, to the board position, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
She is appointed. The next item is adjournment. Any objections to adjourning? Hearing none, we adjourned.